We're gonna get going this afternoon. Can't wait for him all morning. He has things to do.
We do.
People to see.
Places to go.
At least when that seat goes up, I can run it. That's right. Tape every...
There he is. There he is.
Brought coffee and tea for everybody. That's my dinner. You know, we had that discussion about the meetings at seven versus seven thirty. Well, I'm now with her all the way. My change of opinion is...
I've changed.
Actually, she changes to six forty-five. I was saying fifteen minutes earlier now. Is our folks in NCTV ready? Good evening. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for June fifth, two thousand nineteen. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of Massachusetts. Tonight, we have a full agenda. We have a four and six Hill Street, which will be requesting a continuance. We have a Sixth Street, Hill Street appeal, which will be continued. We are going to continue the public hearing for eighty-one Pond Street appeal. We have a new, actually something new to the board, a finding for one thirteen North Street. And we will take up the Lakeland Hills forty B comprehensive permit this evening. So first on the order is four and six Hill Street. We have a, the applicant has asked for a continuance until July seventeenth at two thousand nineteen at seven P. M. So could I have a motion to continue that till July seventeenth at seven o'clock, two thousand nineteen, for the four and six Hill Street special permits?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Rich, Attorney Cannon, you're here tonight. Do we, is there a reason why this continues to be pushed out? It's somewhere there.
Oh, Ted.
Microphone, oh, there it is. Good evening, how are you?
I'm well-trained, Mr. Chairman. I think it's on. Does that work? Okay, good. As you all know, or I think most of you know, Mr. Hunter is involved in the snow removal business. So that sort of fall running into the late spring, he's just out straight. And so he really got a chance to dig down with his engineer, sort of around the April timeframe. So he's just been waiting on his engineer to complete the plans for a site plan approval in front of the planning board, which we need to do before we come back to the zoning board. Those plans have not been submitted yet. I'm trying to get a date on that. And I had mentioned during this continuance that I thought it would be appropriate, given the length of time, to republish notice of the hearing. I just think that's a fair thing for the abutters to do. And so I do anticipate revisiting that. And when we come around again, possibly even examining a request to withdraw without prejudice and then, you know, repetition the board with a new filing, again, so we can get proper public notice out. So those are things that I'll discuss with Mr. Hunter. But essentially, that's what's led to this lengthy delay. So it's a matter, we have to get through planning. He just hadn't been able to address that. And then, once we get through planning, we'll be able to come back before the board. So when we continue, we take a guess. But even at this point, my understanding was that the, we would have been before the planning board back in May, which still hasn't happened. So even if they file now, I know, you know, we're probably not gonna be able to make the July date. But that will allow me the opportunity to speak to Mr. Hunter. And I suspect we'll have some further besides just the request to continue the next time, so we can tackle the idea of, because then, once we go back into August now, we're looking at a year since the first hearing. And we need to re-notice this thing and so that all the abutters have a chance to have their say. And that's what I anticipate.
Good enough. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sixth Hill Street appeal, scheduled for seven P. M. as well. The applicant has asked, due to a personal conflict, to move that to June nineteenth. So could I have a motion for a continuance to June nineteenth for the Sixth Hill Street appeal?
I so moved.
Second.
At, um, seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is seven seventeen. We'll now continue the public hearing for eighty-one Pond Street. Welcome.
Thank you. I apologize, I don't have enough copies for everybody.
I'll share with Don.
Thank you so much.
Who will that, you got Doran? Bob, do you have a copy?
Of that, no. I mean, I don't know what's in it, so...
Yeah, you should probably have a copy.
I can share with you.
I'll share with Joe. Just give me your copy.
Afterwards.
Okay. Just introduce yourself and...
My name's Tim Marie McKenzie. Pleasure to meet you all. I'm here today to ask to approve by right business for eighty-one Pond Street in the C one district zone with an approved site plan dated twelve-four, nineteen ninety-three. I have a business certificate filed with the town. We purchased eighty-one Pond Street on November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Upon the purchase, the only stipulation was that there was to be no landscaping business or excavation business. And that there was, it was strictly commercial use, not for residential. When we obtained the deed, there was a lot to clean up on the property. And the property came with a tenant, which no one seemed to have any problem with until we filed for this F eleven. It took us about two and a half years to clean up this property. There was lots of pallets, there was lots of stone, there was lots of debris. And in effort to invest in the town, we connected to town water. This was originally on well. We spent upwards of seven thousand dollars to connect to the town water. The, we also obtained a septic design approved by the town and put a coat of paint on the building. It was a little bit rusty and threw something up there just to make sure it had some good curb appeal. Previous uses for the property for eighty-one Pond Street was a data center with ten or more employees, a handicap mobility building, mostly ten or more employees with approved handicap parking in the front, and Dulosa Masonry, who we purchased the building from. We applied for the F eleven and complied specifically with questions A through H according to your zoning laws. And we received an email from Mr. Bullock with no specific approval or denial and complied with everything he had asked for. Everything is attached. You're welcome to look. So when we did submit the F eleven, we got a site plan with our purchase and sale agreement that we did not realize was not approved by the town. It had no signatures on it. If you see it, it's in a little bit of rough shape. We had no idea. However, there is an approved site plan for twelve-fourteen, nineteen ninety-three. And it is compliant with your zoning laws. And we would like to stick with that site plan so that we can obtain our F eleven and move forward. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, great. So my understanding is you're actually appealing the building commissioner's request for a full site plan review, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So before we get into questions, we're gonna probably ask the commissioner to just address the board, okay?
Absolutely.
And then we'll ask questions. Is that all right with everybody on the board? Thank you. Commissioner Bullock.
Speaking is not my best thing, but... So when they submitted the application, you know, when you, when I go over these applications, I'm taking the information that's given to me when they're submitted. The application stated that they had a different site plan than what was approved back in ninety-three. The, I just questioned what was going on out at the site. So I asked the planner, Richard McCarthy, to go out there with me. We took a look at it. We found that, you know, the parking spaces that are actually on the ninety-three site plan were really kind of almost behind the fence. It's up on the side of the building right now, not paved. The building had some work, some excavation work done in the front of the building that needed to be straightened out. The, in the back of the building, there's, I think it was nine vehicles, commercial vehicles that were parked out in the back, which required a special permit to have more than, more than three commercial vehicles in that area. So just, my thinking was that they were planning on having the parking in the front based on the site plan that they gave me. So based on those things and that there was no stormwater on the site that I could see either. And those are some of the criteria of the F eleven A. So based on that, I did send them an email saying that my determination is that the site requires a modification to the original site plan. I think that's an answer. But I guess she didn't think it was, so...
Is that a modification to the ninety-three site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And that would be a modification by the planning board?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Okay.
And then if there's parking that's going to be put in the front, there'd be a special permit for that parking as well, so... So I put that in the letter here, you know, as well as storage materials in the back, you know. And the other part that I failed to mention so far was the, in the floor plan that showed the use that they're planning on putting in the beauty salon was also twenty-five hundred square foot garage area that wasn't on the plan. Wasn't indicated what was being used, that was being used for. I found out later, once we went out there and then talked to Bill, that that was actually being used for electrical supply storage. So that's another area that wasn't on the application, so... Since they've moved in, this is the first F eleven A that we've got. So I didn't realize that they had it, they were really utilizing the place completely. So I thought it was empty.
Okay. So what are you, are you, it sounds like they've got something a little different than what you reviewed already, or they're doing something a little different than what you've reviewed already. They've removed a tenant, I guess. They've, do they need to do, should they do a new F eleven? Or do you feel their next step is a modification to the site plan? And Rich, what does that entail? What will that entail for them to get a modification to the site plan? They don't have to do a complete site plan, do they? Or do they just do a modification?
Just modifications.
Okay.
So it'll be a limited site plan. I think, just to clarify, you have the...
Richard McCarthy.
The F eleven A application you have that was submitted had a plan that was not approved. Okay. So you don't want to go with that plan? You just want to go with the ninety-three plan? Okay. So I guess the thought is if they go with the ninety-three plan and adhere to that plan, they really perhaps don't need any modification. But they have to comply with that plan. That's, that's there.
Correct. And see, right now, this is where the, there's a fence. It's hard to see it exactly. The fence is right here. For all the parking is in the backyard here. So they would have to straighten out this driveway and make sure that people could actually access here. And then how they, they're gonna access into the building, you know, which isn't exactly clear the way it's being used right now.
So, and I'll, from my perspective, what it sounds like we need to do here is a new F eleven A, probably working with you to make sure, I think that's the logical approach, and then resubmit it to Bob. And then if that, if you feel at that point a modification has to be done, then go to the planning board. It sounds like, that sounds like we're, it sounds like an appeal may not be required at this time. We might be able to work this out because you're going with a different site plan than he actually denied right now. Does that make any sense?
Sure.
Bob?
Yeah, I think they're very close as far as parking requirements.
I think we calculated. Yeah, we just firm up the numbers.
One at a time. You can't talk with him.
I think they're close.
Sit down.
I think they're very close on the parking requirements. It's really, you know, removing the fence that's out there that's blocking where the parking is. The parking that we, when we went out there, it was filled with, you know, commercial vehicles all out in the back, storage area. He's since then cleaned all that up. And so the fence is still there, that would have to come down. Have to mark out where those parking spaces are actually gonna be. And then making sure that there's accessibility into the building. The other issue, the stormwater, I didn't see any stormwater. I don't know if that's gonna need to be addressed. That is one of the parts of non-applicability. So we can talk about that and, you know, in the discussion of, you know, getting it prepared for modifications to the F eleven A application and redo it.
Okay. And you and Rich can work with them on that?
Yeah, if I may just say... I know you mentioned on set that you had timing issues and so forth. I will say that we just recently went through two eighty-two Denham Street pretty quickly, you know, an old, older site that didn't have a site plan approval. And we worked together with the applicant to get, move things along. They came before the board. If you recall, you granted a special permit.
Uh huh.
For, so, I mean, we'll work with them to get it done. And that's pretty much all I can say. You know, it's not, it doesn't have to be that complicated. It's just that, like I said, I think in this case, it sounds like, retrospect, if you had gone to the ninety-three plan and not that other plan, you probably wouldn't even be sitting before the board. But that's kind of water on the bridge, I guess, but...
As you and I are both aware, we sat in a meeting last night where we talked about economic development in the town of Norfolk, correct?
Right. Well, that's why I wanted to plug you. Two eighty-two Denham Street was an old site. There was a lot of issues that jumped through with pretty darn quickly, so...
Okay.
No, I just wanna, so you're confident that we can work with these folks and get them squared away?
I am always confident.
All right. Because they've put a lot of money into this site.
Absolutely.
And they've got a huge commitment into the town. And I don't want to drag this out at all.
Kevin, any question? Kevin?
No.
Any question?
No, I'm just kinda curious, why was the other plan used initially, Mr. Mr. Big?
We received it with our purchase and sale. And I had absolutely no idea that it was not...
An approved plan.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. We, we received that in the purchase and sale agreement when we purchased the building and had no idea that it had not been submitted to the town for approval. It was an honest mistake.
Cool.
So what I might suggest is to, we continue the appeal, just so we don't close it out. You could withdraw, but I think we'll continue it. And then, once we get this resolved, we can actually, you can withdraw without prejudice. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay? All right. And so I'd like a motion to continue the eighty-one Pond Street appeal through, let's say, July seventeenth at seven thirty on, in this room, room one twenty-four, at seven thirty P. M., July seventeenth.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Dawn, I guess.
Joe and Dawn.
Joe was initial, Dawn was second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Rich, you got your marching orders and Bob, right? Okay. It is, thank you, Bob. It is now seven twenty-five. And we will, we're going to hear the one thirteen North Street, Special Permit Finding. Joe, could you read the application into the record?
Yes. Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter forty-eight of Massachusetts General Laws and any normal amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals in room one twenty-four of the Norfolk Municipal Building, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, on June fifth, two thousand nineteen, for the following application. Eric J. Carlson and Dana B. Willard, trustees at seven P. M., or actually, seven fifteen, is that right? Seven fifteen. For a finding in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, for a property addressed at one thirteen North Street, to alter the locus into three building lots where two single-family homes currently sit on a single lot. Reference assessors map twenty, block seventy-one, lot twenty-two, in the R three zoning district.
Thank you, Joe. Attorney Cannon, welcome again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Edward Cannon, on behalf of the Margaret J. Carlson Realty Trust. I'm joined tonight by the trustees, Eric Carlson and Dana Willard. And Dana's brother, Jay Willard, also a beneficiary of the trust. So, let's see, you know, do you have the plans?
Is it planned, Amy?
Richard's worth a thousand words. Unless it's me speaking, then it's worth three thousand.
Joe, can I have that, a notice of public hearing, please?
Yes, here you go, sir.
Thank you.
I don't think I have it separate from the application, so maybe we'll...
You don't have my application? No, it's all right. You don't have it, you don't have this, right?
Okay. Devin and Bob, can you guys slide to the right just a little for the rest of our viewing audience?
Sure.
Okay.
I think Dan's wondering, where are you?
You stay there. You're all right. You're perfectly placed.
This is property at one thirteen North Street by way of orientation. Let's see, the parking area in the house for the Stony Brook reservation sort of border of this area over here. So the woods back here where Stony Brook sort of continues on the other side of North Street where this is, is sort of in this direction over here, just by way of orientation. So it's a little over ten acres of land. It's been in the family for generations. It's been placed in trust for the benefit of, well, now, three beneficiaries. Presently, it's a single lot with two primary residences that have been on there for years, going back to the thirties. A home here and a home here. So we have been before the planning board twice already with this proposed breakout into three lots, with a proposed road. Presently, the access to both houses is off of sort of this minimal driveway here that comes back to here. And so we've proposed a road here without a ball on it with a hammerhead at the end. It's gonna remain a private road. And so there'll be a covenant that that will be the case. Maintenance will be shared by the three lots. We requested that the planning board waive the build-out. The planning board's been very receptive to this. And we've sort of made it almost all the way through. There's an issue that they asked us to come before this board to address. And that's why we've requested the finding. And that is that back in this area here, there's a fieldstone garage. It's very old and frankly, there's no building like that anymore. And the applicants would like to be able to keep that. The problem is with the new lot lines, it, this would actually be a side lot line and it doesn't meet the setback requirement there. In addition, they don't show here, but they do show on the memorandum that I submitted earlier today, there are some sheds. There's five sheds, two of which will be removed, three of which end up now technically within the front yard setback back here. And so in going through the process and speaking with the town planner, the building commissioner, the planning board, they said, hey, if those are gonna stay, you need to get some relief from the zoning board because they don't meet the setback requirements. And so that brings us to our request tonight, which is under Chapter eighty-fourty, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, which is that this board has the power, under Forty-eight, Section six, to make a finding that when you have a non-conforming structures or use that's gonna be altered, which in this case, we have the two primary residences on a single lot, which is not conforming. And the alteration is, we're requesting to be altered into these lots with an approved access that, let me just quote this, not do it off the top of my head, it's always dangerous, particularly as the years go by, that, I'll just read the snippet. So this is in the first paragraph of Forty-eight, Section six. Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority or special permit granting authority, in this case, the town of Norfolk, that's this board, designated by ordinance or bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration, and then here's the key phrase for this board, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity to the neighborhood. And so what I would suggest to this board is that structures already here, these structures already here, two of those are gonna be removed. We're actually now going to remove the non-conforming of two primary residences on a single lot. The end result is, it's gonna leave some of these, sort of what I would refer to as minor setback issues. But they are setback more than two hundred feet off of North Street. Why do, why do we have setback requirements? Because we don't want overcrowding. We don't want folks sticking structures right in their neighbors' faces. It's not gonna happen in this instance. It's a private road. And those who have an interest in those lots, this is how they would like it set up. So it's in, you know, keeping with the intent of the bylaw. So I would suggest to this board that it would be appropriate to make this finding because what we're requesting is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity. I would suggest it actually improves it, but that's not the standard. It's just that it's substantially more detrimental. And then one thing I just don't want the board to rely on, a misstatement in my memorandum. I did say that the planning board had required access for all three lots to come off of the road. This lot and this lot will come off of the driveway. The issue of this lot, that's just, I believe at this point, the planning board is fine with the existing access. That was a mistake in my memorandum. I just want to point that out to the board. We are before the planning board next week, so all of this, you know, will be taken up by the planning board as well. But they wanted to make sure that we appeared before this board. They know we won't have a determination before their hearing, but they did want to see that we have started, have started the process. And so really, that's what we're here to ask the board for tonight.
Attorney Cannon, can you, the three parcels, which can you identify them for me up there?
Sure.
And I think, go ahead.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there are busy plans, and there are busy plans. This sets the gold standard for busy plans. So this is parcel one here.
Okay.
Okay, it's sort of a zigzag here. Okay.
And parcel one has the, and I'm gonna interject, parcel one has the garage with the stone foundation.
Fieldstone, correct. You'll see on this, there's sort of this sort of outline. These are sort of shed structures. Those are gonna be removed. And that's why we're sort of just asking that the garage with the fieldstone, the fieldstone's the important part. And the applicants want the ability to sort of be able to restore that and use it properly. Parcel two is down here. Yep.
What is that? Is that, is that the line two parcel two? Does parcel two go up this way? It is a busy map, so it's hard to...
Yeah, so parcel two is here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, comes around to the hammerhead down here. And then over to here. Okay? Parcel three is where the back home is. And that comes all the way back to here. And what's sort of cut off here is this back area abuts the conservation land. And this area, two and a half acres approximately, that's going to be, have a permanent, no build restriction on it. It's gonna be reserved for the passive recreational use of the lot owners. So there'd be no further, nothing further going on there. This is all sort of wet in this area anyway. And...
And the existing houses are lot three and lot two, correct?
Correct.
Lot one and lot three.
And parcel three.
So lot two will be a new home.
This will be the new, correct.
Okay. Okay. And did you say that the existing houses will be raised, or did you not?
This house, I think, will be refurbished at some point. And this house will most likely be raised. It's in very poor condition. It's occupied, but because of the situation here, needs a new septic system, the owner's hands have really been tied in terms of making improvements there. He'd be stuck with the current footprint and, so that is, it probably won't make another winter. So he's gonna need to...
You explained, I think, pretty well the, whether it be a garage or whatever with the fieldstone. Can you describe these three sheds that are supposed to remain? Do they have foundations? Is there something significant? When you use the word shed, you know, that's, that's kind of, it could be analogous to something that is three by five, or it could be something that's eight by ten? Can you elaborate?
Excellent. If I could ask, Eric Carlson, Eric resides in that back home. Eric, if you could come on up and take the mic, please. And what I submitted this afternoon, the very last page has, if you want to follow along, there's some numbering of those sheds that Eric referred to. along, there's some numbering of those sheds that Eric referred to.
I'm Eric Carlson. I reside at 113 North Street. It doesn't show here, but if you look at the plan, I'll put my glasses on.
And looking at this, sort of right in this area here, right at the end of the hammerhead.
Shed one is right on what will be the dividing line, right about, right about in here. So that has to, that goes. It's not in that good a shape. Shed three, which is again right about in here, that is going, and shed five is going, which is the last one at the bottom. Shed four, I built a couple of years ago, I pulled a permit, it's 12 by 20. I'm putting everything that's coming out of the house, the house will be torn down, and I'm putting everything that I don't want to get rid of, you know, memories of my parents and stuff like that. And then the other shed, shed two, is for all of my tools, my gardening stuff and whatnot. And that's why I'd like to keep them. And I did set them on, there isn't really a foundation under them, but I did, you know, under block, and I had some old curbstone that my father gave me, so I set the curbstone and let them rest on that.
Eric, how big is building two?
Building two?
Roughly, which is your garden shed?
Eight by 16.
Eight by 16, okay.
It's less than 200 square feet.
Yeah, okay. It's bigger than the type of shed you can just, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any reason why the lot line could not be moved for the fieldstone garage over three feet to achieve the 25-foot side setback?
Yeah, that's been looked at a number of different ways, but by the bill factor, they're right up against the bill factor.
They are.
And that's the trial, they've, believe me, tried a number of ways to try to get there.
Ted, who owns, or who will own the driveway in? Is that sitting on parcel one? Or is it, you know, because if parcel two ends here, parcel one ends here, who owns this? And I'm wondering if that might help you with the setback at all?
It will be owned by the homeowners association.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. That will almost be like maybe a parcel four, and it'll just be a...
Yeah, they don't have a separate parcel on it, but it won't be conveyed to any of those, so the lots have to be drawn based on the layout of the road.
Okay.
And so when this will be done, there'll be a covenant in place that it will remain as a private road.
Yeah.
And then that covenant will also contain, very similar to condominium provisions, to allow the collection of common maintenance fees from each of the lots.
Attorney Cannon? I got the impression two sheds are going to be removed and three were going to stay, and then when this gentleman spoke, he said that shed one is to be removed, shed three is to be removed, and I believe he said shed five was to be removed, but on this plan, it says shed five is staying.
That was news, but if my client is happy to have shed five go, then shed five is going.
I'm actually going to take shed five off.
Okay, so basically, two of the five is what you're looking to retain?
Correct.
Okay.
So that would be, I'm sorry, shed two and shed four. So the even ones stay, the odd ones go.
And the other question is this garage or whatever with the fieldstone, any idea of the age?
If you guys want to take the mic.
Grab the mic.
This is Jay Willard. Jay's mom still resides in the home.
Thank you. So the existing house and garage was built by my grandfather, two of my uncles, and my mother actually helped when she was a kid, so it stones off the property. It's full height walls, the existing garage, and then the stone is also part of the foundation for the house. So that's, I don't have the dimensions off it, but it was roughly when, it was 1937. So it started 1937 with a house, I believe it was completed in 1931. They bought the property, 1931.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Just a question. So the existing shed, the fieldstone shed, so that has no setback violations right now, correct?
Correct.
Is there a reason why you can't alter that property line to not violate the setback?
Yeah, that's a good question, and that's something that Donna McKenzie worked real hard to try to accomplish.
Uh huh.
We would love to not be here tonight if it was all possible. The problem is the bill factor. So as this comes this way, this bill factor shrinks, and as this comes this way, this bill factor shrinks, and it's right up against what's permitted. So it just, there wasn't a way to do it to be able to create the three lots.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mike.
Ted, is it the, the property's in a trust, is it the intention that this will remain a family compound, if you will, or is this going to, are they going to put this out and develop it and sell it to somebody, or is, what's the big, the overall plan?
Yeah, the ownership will be separated out into three separate owners, but the road will be private, and so that will, again, the maintenance of the road, the collection of maintenance fees will be via a covenant that it remain that way.
All right, so the three owners may not be the same family.
Correct.
It'll be, okay.
So the entire issue here, then, is setbacks with respect to the fieldstone garage?
Fieldstone garage and now two sheds.
The two sheds. That's the whole issue here.
That's it.
Okay.
Planning board really likes the plan, and the issue that has come up, which is legitimate, is, hey, when we do this, you're going to have a violation here, and you're going to have a violation here. You can't just let that slide, and so our response to that is, and that, you know, this board has the power, if the board so finds, to make a finding that the proposed alteration to the nonconformity is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity of the two homes on a single lot.
So, Mr. Chairman, the request is, we're not, they're not seeking relief from a specific bylaw. They're looking for a ruling on either significant or not significant.
Correct, because they're not really, they're not asking for relief via special permit. They're not altering any of the buildings. They're really asking for a finding that they're allowed to have a setback less than what our bylaw requires and to keep the sheds with regard to F5A.
Can I just ask something about the sheds real quick? So, forgive me, it's late, it's been a long week, but here's my question.
Make it a good one.
So what I'm thinking is setbacks, do they apply to the residence structure and not sheds?
The problem with the sheds are they're accessory buildings, and F5A states that you cannot have a shed, any structure, in the front setback. That's our, that's a bylaw.
In the front setback?
Right, and that was my question for Attorney Cannon, is that I have, I don't have an issue, and I don't know if any of the board members have an issue with the garage. The problem is, even though we're removing a nonconformity, we are actually via, in doing that, removing that nonconformity, we're actually creating a violation of our town bylaws, F5A, which is, which is, I think, is a concern. And looking at the sizes, and, you know, 12 by 20 and 16 by 20, as much as I'd hate to say they, to see them moved, those could be moved, and, you know, those, that's, I've seen a shed that size moved. And I just, I think, unless you can provide a real good argument, I just think creating a violation, even though it's a private road, and, you know, the sheds were built years ago, I think that's a problem. I think, at least from my standpoint, is that we're actually creating a violation of our bylaws, our town bylaws and our zoning bylaws.
Excellent question, and I would submit that you're not actually creating that, that what we're asking for, and acknowledge that we're switching from one nonconformity to another nonconformity, and that what we're suggesting is that, and again, just to go back to the statute, that the alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. And so, again, so we're going from a nonconformity to a nonconformity, but we would suggest that eliminating the situation with two primary residences on a single lot is actually preferable so that in the end, we have these sheds that are setback over 400 feet from North Street at the end of a hammerhead that's going to be a private way, that really, that nonconformity really doesn't have an adverse impact on anyone. The only one it really has an adverse impact on is one of Mr. Willard, Jay Willard, whose mom's here, who is perfectly fine with it. And so that's why I would suggest that, again, we're switching one conformity to another, and that we're asking the board, is that switch substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity?
But as, but as you're aware, is, right now, we don't have a violate, we don't have a violation of F5A. We don't have sheds in the front setback of a property, correct?
Right.
So that's why I'm saying, is we actually are creating a violation of our bylaws when we put this private road in and we split the three lots. We actually create a violation, which is, I'm a little concerned about that.
But you solve another violation.
I solve a different problem, but I create actually, I create something that's not allowed, an unallowed use. I remove a nonconformity, but I'm creating a non-allowed use in Norfolk.
Right, so it's a swap out, and I would suggest...
I'm giving you the garage.
Well, I would suggest that the, the proposed nonconformity is, you know, is better than the existing nonconformity, to have two primary residences on a single lot. And I do think it's, it's within the board's power to find that, because these structures exist now, so there's really no change as to the impact on anyone here, honestly, in that in order to be able to create this and to eliminate those two primary residences on a single lot, that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. So yes, is it a new nonconformity? Absolutely it is, yes, but we're suggesting that we're swapping out, we're actually solving a more egregious nonconformity, if you will, that's what I would suggest.
Would you clarify, are both the sheds on concrete pads?
Are both the sheds on concrete pads?
No.
Which one?
Shed number four is... Hold on, let him get a mic.
Okay, Eric Carlson. Shed number, shed number two is not on a concrete pad. Shed number four has some old curbstone set in cement that it sets on, so it is a partial foundation, if you want to call it that.
Curbstone being what, like granite?
Yeah, granite curbstone, about four inches wide and, you know, just stone my father brought home over the years.
Sure. Does it have a, what kind of floor?
It's plywood floor.
Plywood floor, okay.
On pressure-treated plywood on, pressure-treated plywood joists.
Okay.
Just, so this is a busy map. My question goes to whether or not these are still considered front yards. Are these, are all of these structures still sitting in what's termed the front yard?
Of the new, of this new development, they would now be in the front yard. They were not in the front yard prior because it was one parcel, so North Street was where the frontage was, so they were never in the front yard. And that was my concern, is when you split this into three lots, you now create a front yard violation with three structures.
Because I was, I would almost, I mean, I'm wondering if the argument could be that the front yard to parcel two is here, the front yard to parcel one is out here on North Street, and granted, the front yard to parcel three may be perceived as being near the hammerhead, but I'm wondering if you could say, hey, here's the front yard, you know, I'm just saying, you know what I mean? And then now, we're not in violation of F5, or whatever that is?
F5A. Well, you, actually, you still are, you are, because you actually, each one is a front yard. But Attorney Cannon's taking resumes for anybody who wants to go work, I'm leaving his CBA.
No, I'm just...
You see, you do, you have three front yards now, and one of them will contain structures, which is a violation of our bylaw. That's the concern. Does the same front yard, I'm sorry, Rich, is the same front yard get violated in all three situations, two, four, and the garage? No. Okay. Which front yard gets violated with the garage?
None. That's a, that's a side yard.
That's a pure side yard setback.
Side yard, correct. So you have a front yard, if you should be a front lot line, a rear lot line, any line that's not front or rear is side.
Okay.
So that's a sideline.
So that's a, that's a side setback issue?
Correct.
Okay, and then the two...
The two sheds at the end of the hammerhead.
Okay. Rich, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, Rich.
Okay, all right.
What if they asked for relief from F5A? Wouldn't that be a variance, or that would be a special permit?
F5A is pretty clear. It says...
Yeah, I just read it.
No accessory buildings in no event in the front yard, so it's not eligible for a special permit or a variance.
I mean, that makes a lot of sense if you run the traditional street in Norfolk, where this is, this is really, you know, it's really a private, it's all private. It just seems to me as though...
We'll deliberate that.
There's got to be a solution to that.
All right. Any other questions for Attorney Cannon?
Just to be clear, so we have the one existing nonconformity with the two primary structures, and then there would be, what, two essentially proposed nonconformities? Three?
Correct. Yep, the setback issues, the fieldstone garage and the two sheds. And what we're suggesting is that by eliminating the one nonconformity of the two single-family residents on a single lot, that swapping that out for the setback violations is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than, than having the two primary structures on a single lot. So absolutely, it would be nonconforming, we know would be going from nonconforming to nonconforming.
Yeah.
And then the statutory, again, the standard that for this board is, is that swap out substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And that can be done. This board has the power to make that finding if it chooses.
Any other questions for Attorney Cannon? Any, any other input from the public? Hearing none? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing for 113 North Street?
Do we have a second?
Second.
You've heard the discussion. We'll deliberate this. When, and you're meeting with the planning board next week?
Next week, June 11th, yeah, I believe that's Wednesday evening.
Okay. Do we have to set another, a date and time for this again? No, we just do our deliberations.
Set a time to do deliberations?
No.
If we want to do a deliberation?
We may deliberate tonight, we may wait till our next meeting, which will be June 19.
Yeah, the, the, the planning board didn't ask for a decision. They knew that, you know, in a few days, they asked, it would be a tall order, so the fact that we've been here and we can say that we've been here is fine, and so they may choose that...
We'll either deliberate tonight, or we'll deliberate on...
We don't need, we don't need to set dates.
That's all, we'll just put it on the agenda. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
We didn't vote on the motion.
How, do we didn't?
Didn't vote on the motion.
We didn't, we just asked for a date so far, so we have...
Yeah, somebody moved it.
So we have a, we have a motion. Do we have, no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, Midora. It is now 7:55. We're going to take a five-minute recess and CTV, and then we will begin the Lake Street Hills 40B comprehensive permit. Thank you. Welcome back to the zoning board meeting of June 5th, 2019. We are back on. We are going to take, open the public hearing for Lakeland Hills LLC. As I remind everybody, this meeting is being audio and video recorded for the open meeting laws. When we last left off, this had, this project had been stayed back on September 21st, 2017, as we were in safe harbor. So now that we are out, we're ready to go. Welcome. Joe, would you please read into the record?
Yeah, notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing will be held by the zoning, Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals of Room 124 of the Norfolk Municipal Building 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk Pass, on June 5th, 2019, for the following application. Lakeland Hills LLC at 7:15 PM for comprehensive permit filed pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B and the regulations...
Promulgated.
Promulgated, sorry. Thereafter, for the construction of a project called Lakeland Hills consisting of 96 single-family units, the applicant proposes that 25% of the units, 24 of them, will be affordable. The property is located 144 Secong Street within the R3 zoning district, reference successor map 23, block 76, lot 71.
Thank you, Joe. Attorney Agostino, how are you?
Good, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good. Will you be doing the presentation?
I will be introducing the development team and giving an intro, and then from there, I'll turn it over to the projects engineer.
Great.
So, if I may, again, Chris Agostino, counsel for the O'Hart family, many of whom are here tonight, I think we're missing one, as well as Lakeland Hills LLC, which is the applicant before the board, in connection with this comprehensive permit project. I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight, so I know many of you, if not all of you, are seasoned Chapter 40B veterans, and I know Norfolk has fielded several Chapter 40B applications over the last two years, which is the reason that this project was stayed. But I think it's always helpful to repeat and just reintroduce Chapter 40B and how it works for those in the audience that aren't familiar with it, that may not have been able to attend the other Chapter 40B hearings that were before this board. So to recap, Chapter 40B is a state law that allows developers, under certain circumstances, to bypass local zoning rules and local land use controls. If a developer commits to, in most cases, establish 25% of the proposed housing to affordability and agrees to limit its dividend to no more than 20% of total development costs, then the developer can move forward with a project that can bypass local zoning controls. Now, it's important to understand that it's local zoning controls only and local land use controls only. The project must, under all circumstances, comply with state rules, and it must, under all circumstances, be safe, and it must comply with appropriate engineering principles. So that is why most 40B projects that you see applied for are more dense than what the community is ordinarily accustomed to as far as projects being proposed in town, because we do not have to comply with local rules. We have to comply with state rules. The only time that a local rule becomes relevant is if the board or its experts point to a local concern that would imperil health and safety, or that would lead to a serious design defect. But otherwise, absent something that imperils health, health and safety, that's the standard, okay? Absent that, the developer is allowed to move forward with the project. So that's why we see a project like this proposed for what are 22 acres of land. Steve will describe the layout in more detail, but that's an overview of Chapter 40B. So we should be focused during this hearing on local concerns, critical defects in design, defects that would prevent the project from being built in a safe manner, and specific identifiable, quantifiable, local concerns. So that's Chapter 40B in a nutshell. I also think it's worth just briefly describing what has happened since we were last before the board, just with respect to the application. Originally, Lakeland Hills submitted an application in conjunction with Lakeland Commons, and part of the proposal was for rental housing and part of the proposal was for for-sale housing. We did receive some comments from local boards, we received some comments and feedback from neighbors, and because this project has been stayed for two years, we haven't done nothing in the interim. We've actually refined certain aspects of the project that appear on the plan that's before the board tonight. We actually submitted a notice of project change to establish that the application before the board is for 96 units of for-sale housing. So there is no longer a rental component before the board. The prime applicant or the applicant that's moving forward is Lakeland Hills LLC. How that actually plays out technically, there are several ways that we could accomplish it, but we are proposing that Lakeland Hills LLC is the applicant before the board. We submitted notice of this change to Mass Housing. They noticed, they sent notice back to us that said, your project eligibility letters are still in force, you can move forward. However, changing the ten, tenure of the housing from rental to all for-sale is something that Mass Housing will need to review on the back end as part of final approval. So we are moving forward with this project, that's the project that's before the board. One of the other major design elements that's changed since the project was initially submitted, and it speaks to this issue of critical health and safety concerns, is that it was raised as a concern that we have about an 1,100-foot entryway to reach the bulk of the property. And where concerns were raised, that that may be a narrow entrance and may present a safety concern. On other projects, in order to alleviate that type of concern, you can propose a double-barrel entryway, so that if one side of the road is, for whatever reason, blocked, you can enter on the other side and emergency vehicles can get by. So that major design element is evident in the new plan, and Steve can talk more about that. So the project, as proposed preliminarily, and that's the other element that needs to be understood, is that, and I'm sure this board knows it well, but for the audience members, this plan will evolve. This plan will change. It's already changed. This is very preliminary, and it will evolve as concerns are raised during this hearing process, as the board's peer review engineers provide comments. The plan you see today is likely not going to be the plan that's actually built when they're ready to put a shovel in the ground. So things will evolve from there, from this, from this version, and we received very preliminary comments from the board's peer review engineer that were appropriate for a preliminary plan, and I think at the end of this hearing, we're hoping to hear more from the audience, hear more from the board, that will allow the engineers to establish a procedure for them to get together to discuss what details need to be added to the plan, what additional testing information needs to be gathered, what specific issues need to be identified, and how the plan will likely evolve even prior to the next hearing when we submit an updated plan set. So before I turn it over to Steve, going back to this issue of critical health and safety concerns, the one comment that we have heard over the last two years and that was presented initially when the proposal was put forward is this idea of density, okay? This idea that a 3,000-square-foot lot or a 3,500-square-foot lot, or a 10,000-square-foot lot, which some of these lots are fee simple lots, will be up to 10,000 square feet. For some reason, that's too dense, okay? Not everyone wants or not everyone needs to buy an acre of land to build one house. And that's what Chapter 40B is about. You don't always need an acre to build one house. If you can safely build a house on a 7,000-square-foot lot, or a 10,000-square-foot lot, or a 3,000-square-foot lot, then you can move forward with a project. If you can't do it safely, you can't move forward. But simply saying that density is a nonstarter is not in and of itself in accordance with the law. If density is identified in conjunction with health and safety issues, then that's the discussion that we can have and will have with the engineers. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to the lead designer on the project, who's Steve O'Connell, and he'll just give the board and the audience a description of the project that's before the board.
Thank you, Chris. On behalf of Lakeland Hills LLC, my name is Steve O'Connell from Andrew Survey and Engineering. So as Chris indicated, I'd just like to maybe take you through some of the aspects of the project. Well, I'll, I'll use my pointer and, and point to the, to the projection. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll go over here so I won't block anyone's view. Don't shoot Dan in the eye. So here at the top of the page is Secong Street, the property's address is 144 Secong. The project consists of approximately 22 acres of land, all of which is illustrated here by the color, the extent on this map. That is the configuration of the property, it is one, one single map and parcel. The entrance to the project will be here off Secong Street with a double-barrel entrance road, two 18-foot-wide paved lanes with a landscaped island. That, that access road will climb uphill till it reaches a crest right about in this area here, where it naturally crests, and then it'll go back downhill here to where we're proposing a traffic calming circle. That total distance from Secong Street to the calming circle is about 1,100 linear feet. From that point, the, the road goes in two directions and creates a loop effect. That pavement is 24 feet wide, and these cut-through roads are also, I believe, 24 feet wide. And we have a little eyebrow road here for a little touch for site design purposes. So we have 96 units, a combination of singles and some, some duplex-style units. What you see different on this plan versus the original submittal is that there are no units along this, this stretch of the road, and this became a single project. We reduced the total unit count, moved the units up here, you know, predominantly in this part of the property. There is a single wetland resource that is situated on the property that is in this area here. That wetland boundary has been approved by the Local Conservation Commission and verified by Mass DEP through a superseding Order of Resource Area Delination, which means that that wetland boundary is confirmed and valid for three years from the date of issuance of that, that what they call an ORAD, Order of Resource Area Delination. The general topography of the property, as I started to indicate, is it comes uphill from Secong Street to an existing crest here and back downhill to a low point, a local low point generally in here, climbs back uphill to this area, back uphill, again, continues uphill to this area, downhill, as you would imagine, wetlands typically exist in low-lying areas. So this is generally the low area of the site. And once you get up into the central portion of the site, we have a small wetland crossing for this access, for, for this road. And then it continues to, there's a slight increase in elevation in this area that helps confine that wetland, and then generally, the topography continues to go to this southerly corner, being another local low point in that area. We collect stormwater runoff through conventional methods. We've got proposed catch basins with closed pipe network that convey stormwater to four general areas with five stormwater detention basins proposed, two at the entrance here, which collect the water from the road and contributing area from this high point down to the entrance. Since this is the high point and then comes back down, we're able to collect the stormwater from this section of the road and contributing area all the way down to this area of the site. We've got a small detention basin accommodated here, one here, and then also one here in the southerly corner. Soil testing performed by myself confirmed soil and groundwater conditions would accommodate the proposed stormwater management basins. Preliminary numbers performed by my office in preparation of these plans, you know, validate, at least internally, that, that these are buildable. These is, these are very realistic, buildable, properly sized, without, without the detail that you would normally see on final engineering plans, but properly sized and accounted for stormwater basins. Final configurations of the project, could potentially modify those, but based on this layout and what we've reviewed and prepared so far, these are legitimate stormwater areas. They're not, they're not conceptual, I guess is my point. The project will be serviced by municipal water, there's an existing water main in Secong Street. I believe it's a 10-inch, I have records with me. We did hydrant flow tests under the supervision of the Water Department, found that there is more than adequate supply and pressure to service the project. There is a proposed gas main in Secong Street to be constructed by Columbia Gas at some time in the future. The project was scheduled but has been delayed due to some of the tragedies that occurred in the, in the gas industry, but we're accounting for that, for that gas service to be available. And of, of course, underground electric cable telephone would come in from Secong Street, be underground throughout the project. Project will also be served by an onsite wastewater treatment system for sanitary sewage, based on soil testing performed by me and, and what we've found on the site from soil explorations and consultation with a specialist in wastewater treatment design. We've identified some areas for the facilities. We've got an area here, identified on the plans for, this would be one, one potential leaching facility area. Here's another potential leaching facility area here in the southern part of the property. And we've made accommodations in this little green space inside that little eyebrow for facilities as well. And when I say facilities, it could be simple as collection points, tanks, pump chambers, manholes. There obviously will need to be a leaching facility, some sort of treatment facility, all, all things that'll happen prior to construction. But again, we've done preliminary evaluations to know that, that's a very, very valid utility and approach to support the project. and approach to support the project. Based on the number of bedrooms proposed with these number of units, being 221 bedrooms, we would expect about 24,000 gallons per day, based on Title V flows of 110 gallons per day per bedroom. So, that's 24,000 gallons per day of wastewater, which also would equal 24,000 gallons a day of water consumption, portable water consumption. In total, there's about 4,200 linear feet of road. That does not, I'm not counting the boulevard twice for each lane. It's 1,100 feet from Secong Street up to the roundabout, the traffic calming circle. And then accounting for the other remaining roads, the total is 4,200 linear feet. We did provide preliminary traffic analysis information prepared by WSP. Should be information you have. If not, something we can supplement. The report yielded that, and this was based on 104 units, as you know, was the original comp permit application. So, we actually have less units with this modified application. The weekday total trips would be 604, with an AM peak of 46 trips and a PM peak of 54 trips. As part of that traffic evaluation, there was a site distance analysis, which indicated that based on posted speeds and traveled speeds, the site distance in both directions exiting the project entrance on Secong Street is met or exceeded. So, I think that's an important aspect with any project, obviously, is the safety of intersections proposed. So, it's a general overview of the project. We, the engineering plans that were submitted to date show some proposed road profiles, all very reasonable road profiles, nothing exotic, nothing unsafe. There was a comment prepared that we received regarding some preliminary engineering review that indicated that the grades shown on the roads do not tie in to the surrounding grades, and that's true, exactly true. We were asked to provide grades as part of the mass housing application review, so we used that information as part of this comprehensive permit submittal. I think it won't be any problem to indicate that as part of the, as the design advances, that how those grades would tie in. So, we would not have submitted a plan that we did not think could be designed and built and constructed safely and economically reasonably. So, that being said, I think that is a pretty good synopsis of some of the details of the site and civil aspects and engineering aspects of the project.
Thank you. Chris, did you want any more, or are you all set?
No, thank you, Steve.
Okay. Dan, would you like to?
So, I thought it'd be useful just to kind of go over the history of permitting the project, since this was a little bit unique. This project started actually in September of 2017. The application was filed at that time, but at that time, this board had, no, I'm sorry. At that time, this board had three pending applications for comprehensive permits exceeding 200 units. So, the board activated the safe harbor under the Chapter 40B regulations and stayed this application until just recently, in April 24th, the board closed the hearing on the Enclave application project. At that point, the board no longer had three pending 40Bs as two. So, then it reached out to the applicant. They, we agreed on a date for this hearing being tonight. So, the hearing is open tonight, and the board now has 180 days to close the hearing. So, during that period of time, it's six months to receive testimony and evidence from experts, from town officials, other board members, and of course, the public. That period of time comes and goes really fast. And in other projects this board has had, we've gone well beyond six months. In fact, the Enclave was probably two years. The Abbeville project was two years. So, it's possible that this project may take longer than six months, but the board only has the right to go to six months, and it doesn't have the right to go beyond that unless the applicant consents to that. So, this application was changed in December of 2018. As Attorney Agostino mentioned, the original project had two components, a rental component and a homeownership component. It had 104 units, now it has 96. It has a mix of single-family and duplex-style units, as was described. So, that's the history of the application. And now, generally, the first thing that we do when we look at a project on the first night of a hearing is look at the submittal requirements and whether they've been met. Now, you do have a memo from Sean Riordan, the peer review engineer, and actually, let me take a step back and explain that. So, Sean Riordan was your peer review civil engineer on, I believe, the last two or three projects. And so, we, before this hearing started, administratively, we reached out to the applicant to see if they had any objections to using Tetra Tech for the civil engineering review. The applicant did not have an objection, and the applicant deposited a peer review deposit into the town's account. So, that benefits everybody. It benefits the applicant, it benefits us to get that process going right away. And so, Sean has been engaged, and he did have a chance to review the materials, and he submitted a one-page memo with nine points. Do you all have copies of that?
No.
No, we don't. It would be important to have that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, can you put it up on the?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, just going back to the submittal requirements. So, you all have a set of requirements, actually regulations, for Chapter 40B applications. And one section of those regulations is the submittal requirements. And by my count, there's 13 categories of things that every applicant has to submit to the board as part of any Chapter 40B application. So, I've had a chance to go through the materials that have been submitted, and I thought it might be productive just to run through those tonight, because there's going to be some follow-up items for the applicant to address before the next session.
Dan, excuse me. Are we going to be looking at Sean's? Are you looking for Sean's letter, Amy? Okay.
So, the first item to be submitted is the waiver list. Now, this is a list of waivers that the applicant is asking for, waivers from local bylaws and regulations that the applicant needs to make the project as shown in the plans work. And what we've experienced in the last few projects is that a lot of times applicants don't itemize all the waivers they actually need. And so, one of the most important functions of the peer review, general civil engineering peer review, is to go through all of your town bylaws and regs, compare those to the project, and flag any missing waivers. So, that process, we've asked Sean to do that. He hasn't done that yet, but I hope and expect that that will be done before the next session. I will note that I've gone through it myself, and this waiver list, in my view, is very deficient. It pales in comparison to the waiver lists that we've received, for example, the Enclave and the Abbeville projects, which are much more detailed and more complete. This waiver list, for example, asks for blanket waivers from several of your regulations, including the subdivision rules and regulations, Sections 4, 5, and 6. It does not include a request for a waiver of a groundwater impact report from the Board of Health Regulations. None has been submitted, so presumably, they're going to ask for that waiver. We haven't seen an environmental impact report. We haven't seen a traffic study. We haven't seen a stormwater report. These are all standard reports, materials that are filed with any comprehensive permit application in the town of Norfolk, and in my experience, in pretty much every town that I work in. So, I think there's deficiencies in the waiver list. I think that's something that we can address and itemize for the applicant and present that to them before the next session. The second category is site plans. So, the applicant has submitted a set of preliminary site plans. From my layperson's perspective, they look pretty good in terms of completeness and detail. Now, Sean has made some comments about, for example, the missing tie-in with the grades. Now, that's pretty critical, because obviously, you know, if we're missing that kind of connection, we don't know how that's going to work, if there's going to be retaining walls. If there's going to be retaining walls, it's important for the board to know the dimensions, locations, and so forth of those walls. I mentioned before, reports, that's the category number three. The requirements require a traffic study, a traffic report, and an environmental impact report. Those are also required under your subdivision rules and regulations. This project is not technically a legal subdivision under the state subdivision control law, but it does essentially propose a subdivision of land. And under Chapter 40B regulations, the board is entitled to compare the project to your local regulations. And in fact, your 40B regulations provides that if a definitive subdivision plan is submitted or proposed, that you are also allowed to ask for what the standard submittal requirements are for subdivision applications in the town of Norfolk. And that, again, has been the practice with our previous 40B projects, including Enclave and Abbeville. So, I just heard tonight that there is a traffic, some kind of traffic report out there. I haven't seen it. Amy, do you have a copy, or?
When was this set?
It may not have been.
Is it new or with the original filing?
Eighteen months, Amy. Eighteen months old.
Eighteen months?
Yeah.
Okay, so with the original?
That was the timeframe.
It was for the larger project.
All right. Well, maybe they can resubmit it, and we'll take a look at it, because I would definitely recommend that for the size of this project.
We don't have a traffic folder, so.
All right. Architectural plans are required, signed and stamped by a registered architect in Massachusetts. I think what we've seen so far is a very preliminary set of plans. I think there's maybe two or three sheets with some elevations and floor plans, so that'll evolve presumably over the course of the hearing. The regulations require various tabulations of a number of bedrooms, lot sizes, various other things. That has not yet been complied with. There is a Table B attached to the revised submittal from December of 2018. That Table B just explains how many bedrooms are in the project, but our regulations go well beyond that and require more information, so the applicant can look at the regulations and figure out what's missing. Definitive subdivision plan submittal, I mentioned that before, they should be providing essentially the same information that's required by the planning board for subdivisions. Number seven, utility plans. So, it's customary for the board to receive details on wastewater, stormwater, and water utilities. Sean has mentioned that the submittal so far does not contain, frankly, any details on the wastewater system, aside from a general location of a leaching field, or two leaching fields. There is no, from what I can tell, any stormwater report. There's no stormwater calculations. We don't have the general soil information that we typically want to see. Seasonal groundwater elevations. You know, there's a lot of information that this board is accustomed to seeing for a project of this size and scale, and is certainly expected, I think, on a general basis. A written narrative, there is a written narrative, not sure how important, really, that is, evidence of jurisdictional compliance that has been provided under 40B. They've got the site eligibility letter, they have site control, and they're proposing low-income housing. Certified plan of the site, there is a plan. This board also received a relatively detailed existing conditions plan back probably about a year ago, when you entertained an appeal from a building inspector's stop-work order. So, during that process, there is a fairly robust existing conditions plan that actually Andrew Survey had prepared. Evidence of title we talked about, they have title, they have a D to the site, there was an assessor's, a butters list, and there's been a pro forma submitted with the application as well, laying out the projected costs and income of the project. So, I think there's some work to be done on the applicant's side to fulfill the submittal requirements under your rules and regulations. And I think that's a nice segue, just for me just to explain in probably about two minutes, since this board is very accustomed to 40B, what your role is in this process. And I often tell my municipal clients during the first night of the hearing to keep in mind at every hearing that the main function under 40B is to allow waivers from bylaws and regulations. And so, your main function, your main job as a quasi-judicial board is to decide which bylaws and regulations should be waived and which one shouldn't. And to make that educated decision, you need good evidence. You need empirical evidence. You know, one of the things that I might agree with Chris on tonight is, density alone is not a reason to deny a waiver. Density alone is not a reason to reject a project. What is a legitimate reason are inappropriate or excessive impacts on public health, public safety, the environment, or the planning objectives of the town of Norfolk. So, it goes a little bit beyond, Chris mentioned, health and safety, but it's not just health and safety, it's also environmental impacts. So, what we typically do with this board and other boards, we collect evidence through peer review consultants, experts in the field, engineers, wetland scientists, and we collect data, we collect information and testimony. And at the end of the day, towards the end of the public hearing, you're going to have to weigh any local concerns that are presented by the project, that is, health, safety, environmental, and planning, and weigh that against the need for housing in Norfolk. So, we've done that in the past with the last two or three projects, and I'm confident we can do that here again. But that's the main function. It's more, I guess, for the audience, that that is the purpose of this hearing. And I guess that's all I have right now.
Very good. Thank you, Dan. Questions from the board? Mike, do you have some?
Yeah, I do. Just, you know, we don't have a lot of detail, so I want to start getting my arms around some specific things, and as you, you know, probably as you supply some of this information, it'll become apparent to everybody. I just want to review the width of the road system throughout the project is how wide?
24 feet.
Okay.
Steve, can you? Oh, sorry. 24 feet paved width for the circle at the top of the hill, and then the boulevard entrance, the double-barrel entrance. Each side of the double-barrel entrance is 18 feet paved width.
Okay. What is the frontage of the units? Just give me a range, from the smallest to the largest, Steve, the frontage, unit frontage?
They go from about 40, 45 to about 80 to 85 feet of frontage.
So, 40 to 85, okay. Lot sizes, again, smallest to largest, what are the lot sizes? What's the range?
Range from about 3,000 to 4,000 to 10,000.
All right. And again, we haven't seen waivers. What is the distance between the units and the lot lines?
Between the units themselves, I believe we maintain 15 feet.
So, there's 15 feet separation between the, from the building to building?
Building to building.
15 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Hang on, I want to go through my questions, if you don't mind. All right, 58. Length of the driveways again, Steve, if you can give me some ranges on length of driveway, shortest to longest?
Sure. So, the length, length of the driveways are about 22 feet long at a minimum. Some are slightly longer just by unit placement, so they may end up being 24 to 28, but minimum 22.
22, okay, 24 to 20, all right. And so, and then setbacks from the road, what's the average setback for these units from the road?
Be similar to the driveway lengths, so.
The driveway.
Very. Various from the same range as the driveway lengths.
Okay, all right. Dan, did you say Sean's working on grades, the different grades throughout the project?
That detail needs to be more provided by the applicant.
Okay, all right, all right.
We provide grades along the road, it's just a matter of tying those grades in throughout the site, between the units, fronts of units, backs of units.
Are you asking about the grade of the road?
Yes.
So we have a road profile as part of our plan set that shows those proposed grades.
Okay, okay.
What is the steepest grade?
Six, I'm sorry, eight.
Eight, okay.
Yep.
And backyard setbacks, again, average? You got a number for me on that, Steve?
Yep, we got about, looks, what, the smallest looks to be about fifteen, and then there are many that have sixty.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Don, you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify, was that fifteen feet between the buildings and the lot lines or between the actual buildings?
From building to building, fifteen feet. So lot lines are generally in the middle, so seven and a half.
Okay.
Other questions, Devin?
I got a couple of questions. Just want to make sure that we protect the public health with regards to stormwater. I know there's a lot of those ponds, specifically the ones near Secong Street. Those are pretty close to abutting properties. Just want to make sure we're following the Mass DEP guidelines on that. I did not, I don't believe, see the septic system, if there is one, on the Cullen property. I would like to ensure that that's shown on the plans, we can ensure that there's a proper separation between the stormwater management system as well as that stormwater system.
Right, and thanks for raising those two systems because obviously they're critical to any development. As to this project, the stormwater management system, because there are wetlands on site, ultimately is going to be under the jurisdiction of the DEP, and it must comply with all elements of the stormwater management regulations. And the state has oversight on that. If you recall, one of the prior projects did not have any wetlands on site, so you had raised a concern about whether or not there was going to be proper review under the stormwater management regulations. And that project did not even need to comply with the stormwater management regulations. This one actually does need to comply with all of them. All best practices, all BMPs, you know, soil testing, and it will ultimately have to get approved by the state. So that should give the board some level of comfort because the state does have jurisdiction there to oversee that.
Well, we're also the board that's reviewing this project, and I feel we have the right to confirm the analysis done by Andrew's engineering, to confirm that everything is done in accordance with the regulations.
So I'll get to that in a second. The second half of it is the wastewater treatment plant. The project is going to be serviced by a state permitted wastewater treatment plant. This is not Title V, this is very different. It's twenty-four thousand gallons per day, that is a state permitting process. So stormwater management and wastewater treatment here are both state permitting processes. For purpose of this hearing, from a preliminary perspective, if there is a site condition or some issue raised that would prevent, that would clearly prevent the project from a preliminary perspective from complying with the state requirements, then that's something that the board would need to identify. And if they did identify, then that would stop the project from going forward with that configuration, okay? We do not need to prove compliance at this stage. But if there is an issue that appears in the course of permitting before this board, then that issue can require a redesign of the project. But to be clear, we are not going to design and present plans for a wastewater treatment plant, we're not going to present a fully engineered stormwater management plant. We will present plans from a preliminary perspective to show that it's feasible. And we have to get Tetra Tech to the point where Tetra Tech says, yeah, yeah, this can be permitted, this can go forward. But a permit from this board will be subject to a state issued permit.
So what evidence has even been provided at this point for stormwater?
So we've done preliminary soil testing on site, and we will continue to do more soil testing. As the board knows, we've done limited soil testing, we haven't done the full extent of soil testing that we planned to do. We need to do testing sufficient for Tetra Tech to say, yes, this is feasible.
Has any test pits been submitted at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Probably not submitted, but performed.
Performed.
What I asked is submitted, have any test pits been submitted at this time?
To this board?
Yes.
Is there info on the plans or locations on the plans? We have that data, we will submit it, if it's not already submitted.
I would like to see that.
We will get it to you.
And I did note that there are some concerns that I might have with some of those stormwater management systems. One of them's located lower in elevation than a wetland resource area. Just looking at that without seeing any test pits seems kind of concerning. There's one that the DEP guideline states you can't be within the fifty-foot buffer zone for infiltration basins. One of those basins is located within the fifty-foot resource buffer. So that is one of the reasons why I think us as the board has the right to review and confirm what the applicant is proposing.
Well, to that point, this project could not go forward if that in fact violated the DEP standard. So if you pointed out something that does not comply, and we can't prove that it can comply, then we'll need to address that. So thank you for raising that, you know, we'll take a closer look. I'm sure Steve has the answer, he has all the answers. But that is the type of issue that, yes, and I know you have an engineering background, so the board has a valuable resource available to identify those issues.
And I agree with you, I think that it should be proven for the stormwater system that it actually can work. Because like I said, those ponds, specifically the ones right near Secong Street, if those don't function properly, you know, that water could potentially spill out on abutting properties or Secong Street.
And that would be a valid local concern, absolutely. So that is exactly the type of issue that we want to continue to hear from this board.
So will we receive a stormwater management report as well as test pits to confirm that it complies with DEP standards as well as does not potentially cause an impact to health and safety of the town?
So since you have raised a concern about the basins near Secong Street, we will provide sufficient information for Tetra Tech. And I don't know what that information is, I'm not an engineer. But what we won't do is a fully, at this preliminary stage, this board is well-versed in Chapter 40B. If you and Tetra Tech have a serious concern, a valid concern, then we need to supply more information. So I have my eye on that now. If you, as an engineer, have a concern there, I have a concern, and I'm going to make sure the development team addresses that concern.
And just for the record, I am not an engineer.
I thought you had an engineering background.
I do, but I'm only an engineer in training, I'm not an engineer.
That's better than most, that's great.
Andy's honest.
And just.
Need more of those.
One other question I had, with, in the mass housing application, it stated that there is, it is walkable to public transportation. I just wondered if you could expand on that further.
Well, as we know, Norfolk has a train station. And there are commuters out there, I know several of them, that walk miles for exercise in the morning to get to a train station. Norfolk is blessed by this downtown resource that allows you to get to Boston in fifty-one minutes. If you can walk to downtown Norfolk, get on a train and be on a beautiful day, if you feel comfortable walking, then you can get to downtown Norfolk and take the train to Boston. I can tell you right now, if there was a place I'd move, it would be Norfolk if they'd have me. But I know people that want this type of housing, that want to be able to get to a commuter rail station and be in Boston in fifty-one minutes. That's why we're here tonight. That's why this board has been fielding 40B permits for the last two years. And as I said in my initial letter to the board, it's a blessing and a curse that this board is doing its best to cope with all these applications. But it is walkable. Now, if this board wants to say that Secong Street is not safe for people walking on it or if the other roads aren't safe, I've heard that concern raised in other towns, on other projects. But there are people out there, and by definition, it is walkable. It's walkable, so.
Excuse me, for the record, Mr. Chairman, before we go too far down this rabbit hole, my residence is about forty-five, maybe fifty seconds from the entrance to this project. I've lived in this town for twenty-one years, and I have never seen anyone walk from my neighborhood or any of the neighborhoods around here to the train station, for the record. Twenty-one years, never seen anyone walking. So if you were to sit there and try to tell us that this is a walkable project, no, thank you. For the record.
Go ahead, Chris. Devin, you have anything else?
Sorry. No. John, when I see this type of layout for these type of projects, I think of logistics of what happens, for example, when it's snowing. And I see, you know, everything's so tight that the snow has to go somewhere as you're pushing it along. So what accommodations are you making for that, not to mention some of the extra parking you may need? Because are you assuming people will be parking in the streets that are here? I'm going to be, like, in the middle, I see no other parking in the driveways.
Sure.
So let's say the per-unit anticipation of parking, what is it, two cars per unit? But visiting parking, or the ability for, of course, police and fire will comment on something like this. But even like just snow removal, in terms of being able to logistically get around here? That's what I'm asking, has that been accommodated? I don't see any common areas other than these individual lots.
Right, and, you know, it's always difficult because boards are presented with a plan like this, and all they see is brown that identifies houses. But there's a lot more space there than meets the eye on a two-dimensional plan or a one-dimensional plan. But as to snow removal, I've had the pleasure of working with the board's peer review engineer, Sean Reardon, on other projects. He's not here tonight, but he has identified snow removal on other projects as a concern. But he's also noted that for a residential project with twenty-four-foot paved width roads, it's not a lot of snow that gets built up. Snow removal is more of a concern for like a Walmart parking lot, where you're pushing snow from large asphalt areas across, and you need a place to put a huge pile of snow. There are plenty of places to put snow on this particular project. I think ultimately the final plan will identify certain areas that are slated for snow removal storage. And I know this board has dealt with that very concern on other projects that are even more dense than this one, and has found that snow removal procedures and placement was adequate. So I think that's a problem that we can overcome, but thank you for pointing it out, and we'll make sure that it's addressed on the plan. As to parking, the parking requirements are actually exceeded, I believe, on this plan under the town's bylaw. There's actually more parking available between garage spaces, driveway spaces, and the other, we actually added some overflow parking. But if you look at the plan, it actually exceeds the town's bylaw with respect to parking requirements. As to emergency vehicles being able to get by, the paved width proposed for this road is twenty-four feet. And again, that's not berm to berm, so I believe we're proposing Cape Cod berm, which, as we know, would allow an emergency vehicle to get over it. So with a twenty-four-foot paved width road and a foot of Cape Cod berm on either side, you're talking twenty-six feet of paved width, which even if there were vehicles that overflowed and parked up on the side of the road with twenty-six feet of width to get by, that has been deemed sufficient on other projects in Norfolk that are, again, more dense than this one with narrower paved width. So we're confident that that doesn't present, well, we're confident that the plans address it, and we've specifically made a twenty-four-foot paved width road to address that. But we're confident that ultimately that doesn't pose a health and safety concern.
Now, I'll still look forward to hearing from the people who need to comment on that, whether it's the peer reviewers or the public safety.
Have either the police or fire commented on this preliminary plan yet?
I think we got a brief summary from the fire department, we have not heard from the police yet, so I'm sure we will now that we have opened the hearings.
Does DPW also have to comment?
DPW as well, as well. Amy will probably send a reminder to all those now that the plan and we've opened the public hearing, to have them come forward with their reviews.
Do we have the fire?
We have a brief comment from the fire.
Very brief.
With regard to the roads.
It's a two-page letter.
Go ahead, Midor.
You guys good? You had referenced tying into a gas main that doesn't yet exist. What's the contingency for that never existing?
We're actually prepared to condition the project on that. So if this board wants to make that installation and that connectivity a condition of the project, then Columbia Gas was slated to do it. But the, you know, tragedy up in Lawrence has thrown gas installation into disarray. So the infrastructure's actually already in the street in certain places, it's just not connected. But ultimately, it will be connected.
Streets marked, but they canceled, canceled.
They delayed the project last September, October, with the explosions up in Lawrence. But the streets are all marked, the trees are marked.
Permits.
Permits, I believe, or. I had spoken to a couple of ladies at Columbia Gas.
Ted, did they give you any estimates on when they might start the project? What's that?
Not that I can remember.
This was all last fall.
But to be clear, this board can be, can have, you know, some assurance and comfort in knowing that they can condition it on that. So if for whatever reason, there's never a gas line there, we have to rethink the project in many ways because we'd have to install LNG tanks, we'd have to potentially put in electric heating with solar panels to pay for that. So that would require a redesign, it would. But we are planning for gas for this development.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, just in response to some of the comments that Attorney Agostino has made. It's, we're going to have a hard time reviewing this project if the board does not receive a stormwater report that complies with the state stormwater standards. There is a stormwater handbook that's published by the state which outlines all of the components of a standard stormwater management report. Devin has explained that. There is a stormwater management permit that would be issued by the planning board for this project but for Chapter 40B. This board steps into the shoes of the planning board for the stormwater management permit. There are specific requirements of the planning board's regulations regulating stormwater management that this applicant has asked for waivers from. There are stormwater management regulations and requirements in the town of Norfolk that are more strict than state law. So I respectfully disagree with Mr. Agostino when he says you can just rely on DEP to make sure everything is kosher. That's not how it works. And it's also not how it works with respect to waivers. The board doesn't have to just waive everything, that's not how the process works. The applicant bears the burden to show that they need waivers to make the project economic. That's the burden if there's an appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. That standard is also applicable at the local hearings, and there's case law to support that, what I just said. So it is essential for the board to receive a stormwater management report. And it's reasonable for the board to in fact ask for more information if it feels that the report itself is insufficient. So this is going to be a difficult project to review if we're not going to get that basic report that every other project in this town has submitted. And in my experience working in dozens of towns across Commonwealth, every applicant submits a stormwater report.
Dan, may I? We will submit a stormwater management report, we intend to. I just wanted to clarify that the standard is not to prove compliance at this stage. You will have detailed stormwater management information sufficient to satisfy Sean Reardon and this board. And Sean's a very thorough peer review expert. So I apologize if I gave Dan the impression, or Attorney Hill, the impression that we weren't going to submit any stormwater management information. We're going to submit sufficient information. Whether or not it's detailed enough, that may be a discussion. But don't get the impression we're going to skip that.
Good. Any other concerns, Dan, or no?
No, I just think. No. I just think overall, I would expect to see submittals from the applicant that are consistent with what we've received in the past and what we need to evaluate the waivers. Because, again, this all comes back to what waivers they're requesting and what waivers they need. And so, we need to have their information first to peer review it. We can't go off and do our own studies. We can't have Sean Reardon go off on the site and think about whether or not the stormwater will work. We need to peer review stuff. And so, if the applicant doesn't provide information, we can't do our job.
Chris, you're clear on what you, you're going to need to put together, as far as for reporting purposes for this board?
Well, I'm not clear on what I must put together. I don't, I don't believe that, you know, any actual standard has been articulated. I think it's a moving target, and we will work with Sean Reardon to identify what level of detail. And if Sean says, hey, wait a second, you're not providing sufficient detail here, then that question will come before the board. If the board feels that our plans are seriously deficient, again, Dan can confirm that's the standard, as a result of failing to provide certain information to allow this board to determine whether or not to waive local requirements, then that's a decision for this board to make. But we are not going to skip stormwater. There will be substantial information presented to the board.
Good. All right. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the general public for some comments. Again, we know it's preliminary. There's going to be a lot of work to be done on this plan. But do we have any comments from the public at this time? Ms. Clark, are you going to grab a mic, I guess, somewhere? Because I think there's only one. So, Chris, could you pass that?
Hi, Karen Clark, Seekong Street. Just a question, will, to the applicant, will the twenty-odd acres be clear cut for this project, or do you plan to leave some of the wooded area behind?
Should I, should I, I need the microphone, or?
Yeah, I guess we only have one, so we're going to have to go back and forth a little. Sorry.
So, as you can see, in certain areas, there are appreciable backyards that can be preserved. But there is going to be substantial grading, so much of it will have to be cut. And ultimately, as the grading plan comes in, so we have to grade a lot of the, as Sean pointed out, area in order to make the road and the buildings sort of mix in. So, in certain places, there will be substantial cutting. It's just, in order to make the grading work, there will be. In areas, we can replant buffer after the fact, if, you know, there are specific areas that are of concern, and they're pointed out to us. You know, I think the distinction is always between just plant trees everywhere, and, hey, is there a need for a buffer in certain places to replant what had to be cut in order to grade the site. So, because of grading, a substantial portion needs to be cut in areas that can be replanted. And again, the wetland cannot be disturbed, so that can't be cut.
Can you give a rough percentage of the amount of clear cutting that will be done overall in the project?
At this preliminary stage, no. But that's a question that has been raised by you, and I think we can give you some of those statistics by, you know, as the project evolves. We don't know, because we're not sure exactly how much grading we need to do. It will be a substantial portion of the site. I'm not, I can't sugarcoat that. There will be substantial cutting.
Any, go ahead, Josie.
Hi, hi. I'm not sure if this mic is on.
You're going to have to speak up.
My name is Josephine. I live at fifty-three Seekong Street. I've been fortunate to be, to have been able to get in touch with the right people to be able to enforce the speed limit on Seekong Street. The part, a portion, I don't know if they're aware, a portion of Seekong Street is twenty-five miles per hour before and after the tracks. Their, Seekong Street, I know for a fact, is not walkable. We don't have a safe place for the children to, the way it is now, to wait for the buses. I, since they're mentioning other projects, I was wondering if there, there is some sort of plan, or if they're thinking that there's going to be some sort of shuttle to escort these people to the train, because that's what happened in Abbeville. I wanted to know if that's in the works, or if that's going to be part of this project. Because it's not walkable. I don't know what the expectations are, how people are going to be able to walk to the train on this, a very long, narrow street that has no sidewalks. That's not clear. That you're walking in mud for a good portion of the time. It is what it is. If they think it's walkable, maybe they can try and walk it themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Josie. Chris, do you have any comments with that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have any comments with regard to that?
I'm, I'm taking notes.
Okay.
As far as all these questions.
All right. Okay. So, there is, there's no, there's no preliminary plan for any sidewalks. Is there sidewalks within the development and/or out on Seekong Street to adjoining sidewalks? As you know, we have, we have a development on Cleveland Street on, of Village Green that will have sidewalks, all through Village Green, going out onto Cleveland Street, connecting to 115. Is there any preliminary plans yet to do sidewalks from this development to connect to existing sidewalks, either on Boardman or on Cleveland?
Does the application exist today? No. But we are obviously, and as I pointed out, taking notes with comments and walkability. We know, again, that the train station is the selling feature. So, as we consider, you know, these issues, we'll absolutely see how we can address that going forward.
Okay.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman. Chris, so there are no sidewalks internally in this development?
No, there are. There are sidewalks internally.
Internally.
And there's plenty of room for them as well. Yes, there are sidewalks internally.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, are these, are these preliminary, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units?
They're one- and two-bedroom units, as proposed. Oh, sorry. I was thinking duplexes. They're two- and three-bedroom units. Ultimately, the wastewater treatment plant is going to dictate how many gallons per day we can treat. So, that's going to have some effect. But we're proposing them as two- and three-bedroom units.
So, who's, who's the market for this development?
Similar to the market for other recent developments approved in Norfolk. That transplant out of the city that wants to get a similar place to what they lived in in the city, but be outside of the city and be able to commute. There's a proven market for it. Units like this are selling in other developments. And, you know, Norfolk is hot right now.
Question for Attorney Agostino. I believe it's said in your mass housing application that you were proposing to have a shuttle bus.
Yeah. And as a matter of fact, I mean, the word, I, so I actually, I pulled everything in advance of this hearing and did my best to familiarize myself with it. I mean, if the possibility was raised, then it's something that, you know, we might have said was going to be explored before the local zoning board. But the mass housing application is not the application before this board. Absolutely something to consider in the context of this discussion. And ultimately, and Dan can explain the process, the board can impose conditions on a project. And then it's up to us to decide whether or not we can accept those conditions.
Just my point with that was, the exact wording is, the development will encourage the use of shared rides and shuttle buses to the local commuter rail station. So, I just, I wasn't sure if you had gone further with that encouragement to maybe something more concrete.
No. There's nothing concrete at this stage. But, you know, there will be a homeowners' association encouraging ride sharing. As we all know, ride sharing is, is the big fad right now. So, I can't imagine, you know, ninety-six units, if all ninety-six people are going to the train station, there aren't going to be ninety-six cars going to the train station. Or ninety-six walkers, for that matter.
One never knows. One never knows.
I just pulled up Google Maps, and the train station, according to Google, is a forty-minute walk. It's two miles.
That doesn't include the driveway either, which is another half-mile.
Forty-minute walk?
I wish my mother's friend, Jeannie Schmidt, was here tonight, because she would tell you how she walks east, pretty much across Milton, every day to get to her office. So, they're out there. It's not to say that this is not an issue that we need to address, but, you know, we can definitely explore this further. And frankly, every project that I know of in Norfolk so far has talked about the train station and how the project relates to the train station. So, that's a great discussion to have in the context of this development.
I, I know it's not probably an issue for this board or the application, but as
someone who takes the commuter rail, those lots are getting extremely full. And without shuttle buses, you know, I, I get to the train station at six fifty-five in the morning, and, you know, I, I'm already, over the past couple of years, I've been pushed further and further back in the lot, because so many people are taking it. I'm not sure where Norfolk stands on capacity in our parking lots, but I want to say it's in the, it must be nearer at capacity.
Very close.
I suppose we'll offset it with our own land. NPTA only has so many spaces.
Yeah.
Could I ask, could I ask a question?
Sure.
To the applicant. So, I understand from tonight, it's, this is going to be a wastewater treatment plant, and that's a state-regulated groundwater discharge permit under, under state law. Can you tell us what the, what the status is of that groundwater discharge permit? And specifically, have you applied, or have you submitted your proposed scope of hydrogeological survey?
No, we have not. And we will not have a groundwater discharge permit prior to this board making a decision on this application. Ultimately, you're going to have sufficient information to understand that it's feasible, and you can condition it on us receiving a groundwater perm, groundwater discharge permit. As a matter of fact, I'm involved in a project right now where the application for the groundwater discharge permit is going to require something of a redesign for the project. But at least preliminarily, you'll know it's feasible. We will not have applied. We will not have gone through much, if any, of the design phase at that point. I think this board will ultimately know where the facilities are going to go, that there's sufficient space to place that facility, that it can be serviced, that it's appropriately sited, that the soil conditions are appropriate for infiltrating the affluent. But ultimately, that's going to be a state, a state permitting process. It's a substantial process.
So, to be clear, you're not going to apply for the DEP approval of the hydrogeological study, because that's the first step of getting a discharge permit, is you have to, you have to propose a scope of work for the hydrogeological study. So, you're not going to propose a hydrological geological study until after this permit has been issued, or that decision's made?
I think at this stage, this is our first hearing. As you know, this project has had some history. It's been two years since we originally applied. We'll see where the process goes. We'll have the discussion with Sean Reardon. If at least the preliminary application is appropriate, we'll consider that and see whether or not it makes sense. But I, I, at this stage, don't have any plan to recommend to the development team that we do that. But it depends on the discussion that we have with the peer review and with this board.
All right. Any other questions from the gentleman?
George McLaughlin, Stop River Road. With respect to the extent of cut that you talk about that's required to develop the site, does any of that cut require ledge to be removed? And if so, could you address how you plan on mitigating noise and vibration if it does?
So, I, I was personally involved in some of the soil explorations that took place for, for general site knowledge and stormwater, preliminary stormwater designs. There are areas of ledge outcrops that we are avoiding in this design, but there are areas that have ledge outcrops where we are not avoiding. So, we, I think it would be reasonable to say that there will be some blasting necessary. All the blasting will, will occur and follow state and local regulations with regards to notifications and seismographs and recording and reporting of, of conditions within, within the confines of, of the law.
I can also state, I know Attorney Hill has dealt with projects that are contemplating blasting in the past, and they have drafted detailed requirements to mitigate any effects from blasting. But, you know, generally, it's, it's, it's something that happens on projects, and, and it has to be addressed. So, that is something, you know, if this board has a concern about that, it's definitely one of those things that would be identifiable, identifiable as a local concern.
Thank you. Quickly, is, is anything being removed from the property in terms of soil?
I don't think, have we done a full cut-and-fill analysis? So, we're still working on the, the grading, obviously. There will be data available to provide a cut-and-fill analysis, and that's not heavy lifting. So, you'll have that data before the night's over. Not this night, the other night.
Thank you, thank you. Working on it as we speak.
I interrupted the questions from the audience.
That's right. Do we have any other questions from the audience?
Hi, my name is Josephine. Again, I do have one question.
Josie, can you speak up a little? It's just very hard to hear you back there.
I, I do have one question.
You're so quiet.
It's kind of narrow at the opening. I'm, I'm concerned even me getting out of my driveway, but the clearance and seeing, you know, both angles, trying to get out, that's extremely narrow going out. I don't know if, if they're proposing to put mirrors, or they're going to cut brush for vehicles going in and out to be able to see, to increase visibility onto Seekong Street.
You obviously heard, you're going to, obviously, you'll become part of the traffic, part of the traffic study, part of the triangulation.
Yeah. And this board can, can explain the process, because they've been through it ad nauseam, it almost seems, at this point. But there is a detailed study that are, actually has already been done, but to the extent the peer review identifies any additional concerns about intersection site distance and site stopping distance that address those concerns to make sure that the entrance configuration is safe. So, that's a detailed aspect of the project. That, that's one of the issues that comes up as a health and safety concern, and that's a very real concern. That's something that we will provide sufficient information to this board, so that they can make a determination that it is, in fact, safe.
Well, you have, you have properties on, on both sides that don't belong to you or to your project. You're not going to have control over other people's vegetation and tree and brush?
Correct.
What are you going to think about?
No, no, absolutely. We have to be able to prove that we have sufficient site distance with what we control. So, we have to show that with what we control, we can cut vegetation that we need to. We can't go on other people's property. Attorney Hill will explain that Chapter 40B does not alter property rights at all. It doesn't give us the right to go on someone else's property and do something. It doesn't. So, we have to do it all on our property.
It's through, just so I, I think I can answer your questions. And through the chair, they are, they're going to submit a traffic study, I believe. And that traffic study is going to address site distances. And the way that's done, there's actually standards out there that say it's based upon the, the speed of the, of the traffic on Seekong Street. It's based upon the grades of Seekong Street and so forth. So, there's a, there's a formula that says what, what, how many feet you need in both directions for site distance to see as you pull out of that driveway, you can see both, in both directions. They, they're going to have to show on a plan that they have the ability to control and to clear the vegetation that's necessary to, to achieve that minimum site distance in each direction. And so, our, the board will hire a, a traffic engineer to confirm what their traffic engineer says.
Thank you.
Okay. Rich, do you have any added comments at this time, or no? None, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask another question?
Sure.
With regards to property rights, I know there's no offgrading on the roads right now. It's definitely, I think, something we need to see. A lot of those, the, the roads in particular are very close to abutting properties. Specifically, where I'm looking at is around Station 800. It looks like there's about a six, like, nine-to-six-foot cut in that area. And I, I think there should, a minimum be a cross-section provided at that area to ensure that, that can, that road can be constructed without going on in a butter's property.
Are you sure you want to hire a peer review expert?
I do run out of time.
I get you everywhere, right?
Dealt with those types of concerns that are exactly the type of thing that needs to be addressed for feasibility. So, you know, we'll need to show that we're able to actually install the grades. Again, not all of them, but from a preliminary perspective, if something is impossible, and it's obviously impossible, then this board shouldn't grant a permit. All right? a permit, all right? But we need to, obviously, we need to be comfortable, because we're not going to go forward with final permitting until we know that we can build it. So, but thank you for identifying that detail.
I mean, obviously, we'd like you to use Sean's preliminary comments, obviously, as your roadmap to start preparing for his review. Waivers especially, going through the waivers. We still have to pick a traffic study group, also architecture, landscaping, water, wetland science. So, we have all those peer reviewers we're still getting in estimates for. Tonight, we will probably, we will approve Tetra Tech for the civil and general review, and we'll make sure, you should probably start with him as far as identifying his comments or responding to his comments, and then preparing the needed information for our next hearing for that. Okay?
Sure, absolutely. I think I would plan for Steve to reach out to Sean directly and coordinate to likely submit a revised set of these drawings before the next hearing. So, it would be helpful if, we're talking scheduling at this point, what the board's schedule looks like as far as when the next hearing might be.
What is, obviously, we're looking at July, which is a tough month because of the vacation week. Dan, we haven't even talked about your schedule. Is your schedule, right now, the ZBA is a hearing on the 17th, which is already chock-a-block full. So, we're not doing during that hearing. So, the question is, do you want to set up a meeting for the 31st, which would be the last week in July for next preliminary hearing?
If the engineer-
How much time do you need to put together a plan?
Right, and I think that's a function of whether or not the engineers can get together.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused as to what's happening here. Are you going to revise your plan, and then you expect Sean to review the revised plan?
I think that's a worthwhile discussion.
Okay, because that-
We were hoping to get some feedback that would help us reach that point. Feedback about a number of things. I think all the things we've kind of touched on. And if we get none, and we decide that we need to advance the plans, then I guess we will.
Because the way I was thinking this would happen is that we would have Sean complete a first round of peer review of the current plan set. But if you're planning on making changes already, then I would say, we would tell Sean, hold on, if you're going to submit a new plan in two weeks or something like that.
I would ask Sean to hold on, and what's going through my head right now, and I know Ted's probably clenching his jaw, but I think that July date might make sense, because I know Steve's away, and to allow Steve and Sean to touch base, we got a lot of feedback tonight. We heard a lot of interesting things. So, it might make sense for Steve and Sean to touch base, Sean to produce a revised plan set with detail in specific areas, and then to have Sean peer review that in advance of the 31st, and then have Sean's peer review presented on the 31st, or that hearing at the end of July.
Well, I think if you want to do that, I would recommend that we set a firm deadline for the submission of the revised plan, because I don't want there to be a lag, Sean gets the revised plan on July 17th and somehow has to turn that around.
And I think because the hearing's so far out, it would be a good opportunity to do that. It makes sense. Give Sean plenty of time.
Yep.
So, you think you can have a revised set of plans to him prior to the 17th?
Can you do it earlier than that? Because that's only two weeks-
That would be the latest, and that's probably too late.
Because what's, today's the 6th, and you got-
Today's the 5th.
I think we can probably commit to the week before the 17th. That'd be like July, the middle of the week is July 10th.
That's a whole month. Did you did a whole month to do a-
Well, I mean, I think we've-
Tough stretch, you know. We're both away for 10 days during that period, and you have the July 4th week, which is a slow week as well. The other, so I think, that should give Sean enough time. And I know Sean's not here to answer that.
I mean, I don't know what his-
His schedule.
Yeah, we don't know his vacation schedule. I know I have a week off, the week of July 8th. I guess if I knew we were going to get not just a revised plan, but again, your stormwater backup, I mean, you just said tonight that you're going to provide backup. So, I think if you have that whole package together, then I think we've made a lot of progress, and I think that's reasonable, but-
That's our plan.
Okay.
Yep. So, what's that date?
About the week of the 10th.
Is it possible, though, to move that up a little bit? I mean-
I mean, he'll get them as soon as he can. I mean, we'll commit to-
He'd have three weeks, he'd have three weeks from the 10th.
I don't know if he's off for a week. That's my concern. I don't know.
And frankly, if he shows up at that hearing with good commentary, that's not the end of the world. I mean, we don't need it a week in advance at that point. You know, we will have had some discussion. So, if he shows up on that night with his peer review, presents it, we have a discussion about it, that would be productive.
Let's try for the week, let's try for having to him by the 5th, and then if you have to alter that, let Sean know, let Amy know, so she can let the board know. I mean, that's only a couple of days off. It just gives him, gives him three full weeks to look at it, hopefully, if that works.
I think putting that on the calendar, and we'll keep Sean and the board's attorney informed about the schedule. I mean, we're not going to sit on our hands, so. I would also say, since, again, we have this interval, we will make sure that the traffic information is submitted.
And that's a full traffic study, is that a-
It's a traffic study and site and stopping distance as well that's available for review.
Is Green doing that, or do you have a-
No, it's Parkin's-
WSP?
WSP.
Is that Jennifer? Yes. Yeah, she didn't have it anymore, but she did the report.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the lag, because today's June 5th, we're talking about meeting again on July 31st. That's almost two months out of a six-month hearing. So, do you not want to meet again in June? Is that-
The problem is our June calendar, our June calendar's pretty tight already. We have June 19th, which we have a hearing, which is in two weeks. And again, we want Sean to get preliminary information as well, correct? More information, or revised information.
I mean, he could start looking at the waiver list, for example. I mean, there's other things he can do that aren't necessarily tied to reviewing a plan.
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to help out with this.
Yep.
It is the summer months, people aren't on vacation. I mean, I'm willing, and Mr. O'Hart's willing, to give this board another month in addition to the six, that they have, you know, that 180-day deadline. At this point, I think we can offer that, since we are taking two months, and, you know, we want to work the process. I mean, we're not looking to get out of here in six months. If it becomes apparent that that's where we're going, but it's clearly not the case at this early stage, and where we're all dealing with vacations and everything else, I don't think it's inappropriate to offer that.
Okay, so you guys will sign a form, a null, a disagreeing to extend the deadline by another 30 days?
By 30 days.
Okay. That erases my concern of that. So, I think, but I would like to discuss picking a peer review consultant for traffic and wetlands. We don't have proposals in yet. We have a Tetra Tech proposal, but we've also just asked for other proposals to compare that by. So, I expect to have those, this week or next week. But I guess the question is, do you want to all meet at some point? I'd rather not wait two months to make that decision. Or do you want to delegate to the chair to select them? I mean, it's up to you guys.
Are you making a decision in two weeks, in 19?
I would expect that we'd have proposals that are sufficient for you to make decisions on peer review consultants for the rest of the issues.
In the past, the Land Use Office has taken charge of that and made the call in conjunction with the chair.
So, you could do that. You could vote, you could vote tonight just to delegate it to the chair and the town planner, if you want.
And then we can-
So, you'd make, so that, so the chair would make the decision. We'd inform the applicant. If they have an objection, they can raise it to the chair. But again, that wouldn't be heard until the next hearing, which is not until the end of July. But we have the month extension, so.
Okay. All right. So, why don't we take care of that business right now? Can we get a motion to appoint the chair to make a decision along with the town planner with regard to the landscape, architecture, stormwater, no, stormwater, wetlands, science, and traffic review?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. And you will work to getting those done in the next two weeks?
Yep.
Okay. Also, at this time, can we get a motion to-
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. And could we get a motion to accept Tetra Tech to review the civil site utility plan and document review, as well as the, I don't, did he apply for the wastewater as well? Was he going to look at the wastewater?
Yeah, that would be within his scope. His scope would include stormwater, wastewater, all utilities, and just general civil engineering.
Okay, and wastewater review. So, he's going to review, do we have a motion to approve Tetra Tech for civil site utility plan and wastewater review?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we got that done. Okay. All right. So, we got to work on a plan for the 5th for working with Tetra Tech, July 5th?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe we haven't received comments from all departments yet.
No, Amy's going to reach out to all the departments again. Now that the hearing's open, usually this starts to spur their interest, and we will-
So that gives us-
Can Amy send out some sort of deadline to those departments, so that gives us ample time to incorporate comments into revised plans?
Yes, sure. We will. There'll be preliminary comments, as you know, that develop as well as the project.
Yep.
Okay, Amy will take care of that.
So, I think we said July 10th for the revised plan?
Sooner if possible.
Actually, I said July 5th, and the 10th is the last, is the deadline, but July 5th.
This would be the goal.
Okay.
10th as a-
So, get the plans July 5th. The 10th would be the latest. They'd get them back to us. They're going to afford us, Chris is going to afford us one month addition to the 180 days.
Ted.
That is, Ted's going to afford, you're not going to?
Ted's offering.
All right. Ted's going to afford us two months, now that you gave it to Ted. So, he's going to give us two months. Ted, you'll make sure you get us a letter off. Make sure you have, whoever's writing that letter, get us a letter off.
I'll work with him.
I know. I know. And then we will plan on having our next meeting on the 31st works for your group.
It's the fifth Wednesday of the month, so, I mean, we shouldn't have any conflicts.
Anybody have a conflict on the board for the 31st?
Of July. Of July.
Of July. No.
Not at this time.
Okay. Is that me?
What would be reasonable, Mr. Chairman, to have some sort of deadline for department comments? Would the 21st of this month, which would be two weeks from Friday, be reasonable?
Department, you meaning police, fire?
Norfolk Department.
Police, Fire, DPW, yep, whatever, town departments, border health.
Will the plans be changing significantly between now and then?
You have a-
I'm going to give, we will set a deadline in our memo of the 21st to those for the preliminary pan. So, that's over, that's two weeks from today.
Thank you.
Okay? That gives you two weeks, and I'm going to hold you to the 5th then. So, you're going to be held to the 5th to provide a new plan of July. We're going to hold them to the 21st to provide initial comments. Okay?
Is it okay to ask a question?
21st for comments from department heads?
The continuing meeting is 7 o'clock in this room?
We'll get to that, yeah. That would be the plan.
We have an audience member arrived and asked a question.
7 o'clock here.
Oh. Do you mind if we take another question? Do you mind if we take a question from an audience member who just arrived?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman. It's your meeting.
As long as you have no problem. Sir?
Sorry, I was at work. I just got here.
It's all right. Just state your name and your address.
Mick Kozakowski, 24th Stop River. I just have a question. Maybe it's been tossed around already. You're talking, from what I gather, it was hard to hear, but you're talking about a study on the traffic pattern. But has any consideration been made about the fact that there are three 40Bs within close proximity to each other? I mean, there's two on Cleveland, and then this one here. So, any traffic study is going to have to include all of those sites. They seem to be very, very close in proximity to, you know, the rural roads that surround that area, and I'm just wondering, I looked at the paperwork for this 40B filing, and really, the only criteria that the state has is, does the person own the property, and is it buildable property? That's it. There's no question about, there are two other 40B properties within the same locale. So, really, that's my question. Was there any consideration about-
Traffic study will take into account those already approved 40B projects, and they will take into account the number of morning and afternoon traffic from those sites. That will be part of the review. Okay? Anything else, Dan, that you could think of?
And the submission of the traffic report, you can do that this week?
Yeah, we'll just take a look and see. It's a little dated because of how long this day has been in place. So, I think out of respect for the professional who prepared it, give them the opportunity if they would like to update it. It shouldn't take much effort, but it's something that we can provide a quick turnaround on.
That would be probably, I think you said you would get that first by the 5th as well.
Sooner.
Yeah, right.
So, July 5th?
Yeah, the latest, yeah.
All right.
Could we also include test pits? I know there wouldn't be a stormwater report or preliminary-
There will be.
There will be.
Part of the 5th, part of the submittal on-
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize if I gave any misinformation that we were going to not submit any stormwater data. There will be a lot of data that will be submitted, test pit data. There are test pits on this property going back to 2005. So, you'll have a lot of soil information, data. It's just, there's always a give and take about the level of detail in a stormwater management report at the local level.
Sure. I just mean, if we could just get the test pits data as soon as possible, so we're not getting everything at once, maybe just a little bit of breakups to-
Anything you can provide through Amy, through the website, would be great, as soon as you can. Okay? Anything else? Any other questions? All right, so could I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, just one more question in terms of the traffic study. Once school is out, the traffic on Seekonk Street and Boardman Street and Cleveland Street changes dramatically. I don't know if there's any past traffic studies that they can refer to that were done in a timeframe that school was still in session. I mean, Norfolk empties out. A lot of people leave for the summer. So, if it's not done till July, I don't think it's going to be a true representation of the actual traffic on those roads.
I think the traffic study will be pretty comprehensive, and also the peer review.
It actually addresses those fluctuations. There's actually a methodology for traffic engineers to actually account for seasonal fluctuations.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Chris, do you have anything else to add, or Ted?
Nope.
Okay, good. All right. So, could we get a motion to continue the public hearing for, are we going to refer, is this going to be Lake Hill LLC? Is that how we're going to refer to it?
Lakeland Hills, thank you.
Lakeland Hills LLC. Till the 31st, it's 7 o'clock in Room 124 at Town Hall. So, we'll, we have a second.
Second.
Well, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We will see you then.
See you then.
If there's any changes, let us know. To your preliminary dates of getting us information, that'd be great. I had you a couple of minutes, just before you come home.
We got to approve some minutes, right?
Yeah.
Are we going to do the board read-off?
No.
Just two minutes.
But it's nice to not give you, like, this is probably the worst it's going to get. This is big enough. I appreciate that.
Well, I'm not going to have to make a choice with the other guy.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I thought what I didn't do.
Are they here?
Yeah, we have them.
So, we're not reviewing three sets of them?
No, we're reviewing two.
Two.
Okay.
Two. So which ones do I have to sign? Just sign them anyway.
I think we're doing minutes.
All right, could everybody take a look at the April 24th, 2019 minutes? I think everybody's helping. Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
Drive safely.
He's running. Won't get very far.
See you in the morning. I move to accept the minutes dated April 24th, 2019, the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll look at the May 1st, 2019 minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes from May 1st, 2019, Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for June 5th at 9:40 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much on CTV.